Good evening and welcome to the November 30th, 2023, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the City Council. The Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the city makes a recommendation with the City Council having final decision-making authority. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application, subject to an appeal to the City Council. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, then time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have my paperwork in order here. Five items on the agenda tonight. The first item is commission business, which is the swearing-in of a new commissioner. And so I would ask Commissioner Isa to please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Abdysikara Isa.
I, Abdysikara Isa.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the state of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
The United States and the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the office of the Planning Commission.
Of the city of Bloomington.
Of the city of Bloomington.
And the county of Hennepin.
And the county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations and welcome to the Commission.
Thank you, Chair.
Item number two is a request for continuance on a final site and building plan for stadium improvements at Jefferson High School, and the planning manager has an update on this application.
Yes, Chair Roman, commissioners, we do have a request from the applicant in this item for indefinite continuance. That is to allow time to prepare a noise study and to seek guidance from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency on a potential noise variance process. The applicant has extended the agency action deadline to June 1st of next year. So once the applicant determines a date to return to the Planning Commission, we will be posting a notice in the newspaper, the Sun Current, and mailing notice to all property owners within 500 feet of the school site, and that will announce the new date for another public hearing. So we do have two recommended motions, first of all, to close the public hearing, and then secondly, to indefinitely continue the review.
Okay, thank you. So for the benefit of those who are in the chambers or maybe watching online, the Commission will not be taking an action up or down on the item that appeared before us on November 2nd. The action that's requested for the Commission is to indefinitely continue. However, the public hearing is, does remain open from the last meeting, and there are people who I believe may have chosen to come for that item. So the public hearing is open, but as you think about whether or not you'd like to offer testimony, I do know that there will be no action on the item at this meeting. So at this time, the public hearing is, does remain open, so I would say if anyone would like to speak on this item, you are welcome to come forward. You may sign in, and you would have three minutes for testimony. And also for clarification, I know that there are two very similar items. This item that's in front of us, and item number two, is for the proposal at Jefferson High School.
My name's Doug Herzog. I live at 10215 Johnson Circle. I'm just wondering, how could I find out if anything has been purchased for the stadium before you guys have already made a decision? So I'm just looking for some direction on that.
So in a public.
Like, have you purchased bleachers?
Yeah, and that would not be, so just a little bit out of order here. The public hearing is not a question and answer, and the Planning Commission would not be privy to anything the school has, hasn't done. That's not.
Okay, it's just interesting because they say the opposite. So, I mean, it's just, you know, hey, talk to the school district, talk to the school. I got it. I'm just saying that you guys just do the circular thing where nobody gives an answer.
Again, I can't speak to.
Thank you. I just wanted to point that out. It seems like you guys are just doing some circular thinking.
We don't represent the school board. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Yeah, I'll speak.
Go ahead and come on forward, introduce yourself, sign in.
My name is David Olson. I'm a son of parents who live here, and I live in Burnsville. I just want to thank the Planning Commission for doing its due diligence of, of doing what's right, you know, doing a noise study and, and I think, was it, I can't ask a question, but I think the high school at Jefferson and, and the district actually asked all of you to request an indefinite continuance. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And what, the difference between indefinite continuance is means that the date is not known today.
Okay.
The difference between the last meeting, when we had a date certain continuance, which said that the meeting, we would have the hearing again today. So that's the difference.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your time and efforts, and I know, I don't think I'm going to use all three minutes, but I thank, and Abdi, welcome to the board.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
My name is Craig Hall. I live at 10217 Johnson Circle, so right next to Jefferson, the parking lot's at the back of my house. The only comment that I have to make is that, so I'm fairly new to the neighborhood. I moved in in 2019, and the first notice I had was in October, and at the bottom it said that it was for a final resolution. And so I'm glad that it's being delayed because I didn't even understand what was going on at the time. I didn't grow up in Bloomington. I've only lived there for four years now. So I think taking your time and making sure, and if there's a place where you can put a list for people to receive emails, that would actually be a better way to get information than actually going through this newspaper, that's very old. And also doing, you know, mailing, if it's going to be like this, where it came like three days before the meeting, that's not good for me because I work out of town. So it's very important that you make sure we know what's going on and that we get the information as soon as we can get it. So I propose that you come up with some type of mailing list on email so that people in the 500-foot district are notified immediately. And they may not take action, but at least they have the opportunity. Okay, thank you.
I live at 10213 Johnson Circle, and my name is Floyd Olson. You may know it. You may have heard it, and you may have read some of the things that I've written since I couldn't speak for more than three minutes when I was here last time, and I had a lot to say. I've written a lot of memos, and I've distributed a lot of memos, and some of you may have read them. What they contain for your information is probably seven to 10 significant legal issues that you're facing. And I just want you to know that, so if you haven't read them, I would certainly encourage you to give them to your city attorney. The first thing I would like to say, however, is that Mr. Roman cut me off when I was trying to explain a couple of things, and I, which is his, you know, it's his right to do that under what your rules are. But I do want to tell you that I think that when you give 30 minutes of time for the applicant to sell his product, and then people who are opposed to it only get three minutes, I think it's a denial of due process. And that's one of the legal issues that I think Bloomington is facing when it comes to its hearings. I'm only saying that because I used to be the city attorney, and I was always puzzled over why they limited people to three minutes when the person who was proposing something was always given an endless amount of time. And what it does is reveals where you're coming from, and we do know where you're coming from on this one. So thanks very much.
Hi. I was here at the November 2nd meeting, and I had some questions then that I've kind of followed up on. So noise in this hearing seems to be the main issue. The continuance is being granted for the pursuit of a variance to noise, and then it feels a little bit like people think that's kind of the only hurdle. So I, as one of the neighborhood people in that area, would like to bring up the other three major issues that I feel are not receiving any real consideration. The first one being traffic, safety, and parking. Since the November 2nd meeting, I have had a chance to speak with a lot of people in the neighborhood, and they do not believe there is parking on-site enough for this planned stadium at Jefferson. We've also had conversations at Kennedy. They have a little bit better parking situation, but we already experienced really terrible backups just during school traffic hours. So if you're talking about adding these games in the evenings, there should be some plan I just would love to hear more about for how to handle that influx of traffic and parking. We've had many pedestrian injuries and accidents reported. People crashed through the fence of one person, it's a neighbor of mine, repeatedly. So that mitigation would be something I would just love to hear covered a little bit more and not a noise variance somewhat seen as a golden ticket to approval on this. The other two things are the lighting, which I know I was happy to see. The downshielding was removed, or the upshielding was removed, and the downshielding remains to help with light trespass. But my last item would be the environmental impact I mentioned last time, and the 90-foot poles with, I think it's 10 fixture LEDs still. There are tons of studies that prove that that is terrible for migratory birds. I just would like to see some work done on mitigation and, and work with the MPCA or the Watershed or Nine Mile Creek Group, just because this is such a major flyway. We have 325 bird species, roughly 40% of shorebirds come through this area on that major flyway, and we have beneficial insects, we have endangered species in this area, species of bat and bumblebee, and I just don't feel like anyone's speaking for them. So my, my, I ask would be that even if there is a noise variance pursued, that these other areas are addressed, and that maybe there is even some kind of conditional agreement with the neighborhood to make sure that the safety and that the environment are concerned. Thanks.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I live at 315 East 98th Street, kitty corner from the football arena, the current football arena at Kennedy High. Among several concerns that I have are if the stadium, first of all, it's an R1 district so that it's residential. The neighbors that I spoke with were actually shocked when they found out, just directly across the street. Again, they had maybe been flyer'd, but the flyer hadn't been received in a way that they paid attention to it. So lots of concerned people that way. The other thing is, is that if the stadium was built in an area that's R1, and it's only zoned for that kind of usage, I know there's exceptions to schools, but it was never intended for that area to gain a night stadium. The stadium is going to have lights that affect, again, insects, birds, I'm also speaking for them. We do have endangered species going through there. The rusty-patched bumblebee is there. We have, we do have migratory birds, but we also have dusk emergent species, the brown bat is in that area, and that's on decline, and that's been a concern for federal wildlife as well. So a couple of those issues. The other thing is, is that I'm concerned that because the school district rents out their facilities, that we could potentially have seven nights a week of a stadium lit in a residential neighborhood from dusk until 10:00 PM. And I don't think that's the intention, but that's the potential, and there's nobody that can tell me that that won't happen. So we don't know how the school district plans on using the rental end of this. I don't know that they're even allowed to rent out school district property. I thought it was just made for schools. There's just so many questions around it that are beyond just a noise variance. The noises, the lights, they all affect human beings and insects and birds and animals in ways that we're not really attending to. There's so many studies out there that talk about how those things affect people on a daily basis. Kids will go through that school and out in four years, but the residents, as my family has been there 70 years, will be there again and again and again, and it's a very large change for those families. And then last, the school would be well-advised in including neighbors, immediate neighbors in the discussion so that there's some kind of interface in, between the two that they're working together. And I know that's not part of your jurisdiction, but it hasn't happened. So giving everyone a voice in the planning process would be nice. Third, or at least, and, oh, another location in the South Loop. Perfect. It's already lit and noisy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Is there anyone online?
Chair Roman, we do have two people online that may be interested in speaking. I don't know if you want to get.
Sure, we had someone who came to the table. We'll go ahead and take them first.
I live on 95th and Stevens, and there's the Maple, Maple Park across from me. But when Kennedy gets out, that is like a thoroughfare, a race fair, and I get a lot of traffic on that whole street. They ignore that stop sign. You put a bunch more people in there, it's, the traffic is tremendous. And there's also a daycare that nobody says about on Third there, too. Is that going to be affected, or? But I'm just concerned about traffic and the noise. I live across, at the, I mean, across, and I got a park in between. I get, whenever they're playing, I get all the noise I want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair Roman, we'll check with the people online. First of all, Kenneth Ennis, I will unmute you now if you'd like to speak.
Thank you very much to the City Council for taking us under consideration and extending this indefinitely to make that consideration. You've taken our concerns into heart, and much appreciated for that. I want to reiterate that we do have, as I've already stated in previous meetings, we do have a stadium already in place, and it's a fine stadium. We just need to make use of what resource we have, and, and that's my offering on that. I, my, I do reiterate the concerns for the environmental concerns and just the general congestion and, and, and community impact that's going to occur if we do incorporate these two stadiums into the new locations that we're proposing. It's something that the City Council really needs to take to heart, you know? Is it something that is needed by this community at this time, above and beyond the actual stadium that we have? I say make that one ultimate and the way to go. But appreciate your time. Thank you again for your listening to my input, and we'll be, I'll be watching closely to see how we can proceed on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Paul Applikowski. Paul is with the applicants team, but I will unmute you now in case you'd like to add anything.
Did you have any public comment to make?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to speak on this item?
I don't really have anything new to say that has not already been said. It's just another voice saying people are concerned about the thought of building a stadium both at Jefferson and also at Kennedy. I am a, I attended Lincoln. I also graduated from Jefferson. I've been to many, many, many games in the current stadium over decades, quite honestly, and I don't see a reason. I've talked to several people who've been trying to give me reasons why you're trying to build two new stadiums, and I don't hear any good ones. And I guess that's my point, is it just seems to me that we should be able to take what I think of as Lincoln Stadium, and that the entire city has shared for many decades, and do any renovations that are necessary, and put our money in that stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. So we have before us a request for an indefinite continuance. Before we move to that, I would just like to make a couple of remarks. I think it's clear, we heard at the last meeting, it's clear we heard tonight, there are outstanding issues that while they are not items that, again, as I explained at the last meeting, the Planning Commission's authority and role is fairly narrow, and it's fairly restricted. And so what I will say is, we have heard a number of things from the members of this community that, that are, that people are feeling that have not been heard or not been addressed. And so I would encourage the applicant, in whatever time they have to, before they, if they choose to bring this back, I would encourage them to spend the time to address those issues, spend the time reaching out to the community, spend the time answering the questions. We heard a number of things tonight. We heard, and again, these are not things that are surprises to me either, as a member of the Bloomington community and a parent of students at Bloomington schools, you know, we heard about traffic, we heard about lighting, we heard about environmental, we heard about rental usage, we heard about a number of things. We heard about a lot of things last time, too. And so again, the Planning Commission, our scope is fairly narrow. An application will either meet or not meet the standards, but this is the time when, since there is time ahead of us, I can share some general consensus from what I heard from the community and encourage the applicant to do a lot of good work in the next however many weeks or months before they choose to bring something back to this body. I would, Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, I would like to address one item of testimony, if I could.
Yes.
We heard a desire to be more informed about this item.
Yes.
And a potential email list. If I'm not mistaken, that's already an option provided by the city. Perhaps the planning manager could provide additional information on that?
I was tagged to mention that, and I forgot, so I will throw that back to people who know more about this.
Chair Roman, commissioners, thank you. One of the speakers brought up the idea of email list, and the city does have such a list. It's called e-subscribe, and you can sign up for it on the city website. And we do have, for those of you in the audience tonight, we have some business cards that explain how to do that, and I believe they're sitting at the back table if you want to grab one on your way out. So if you sign up for that, there's all kinds of lists you can be on, but one of them is Planning Commission list, there's a City Council list, and that will give you emails saying what's on future agendas, so you'll be more informed. I'd encourage you to do that.
That's a, that is a resource. I think I would also encourage us to figure out if there's other ways, because what I, what I know about, because I'm on several of those myself, that is helpful when the agenda is posted, which is six days before the meeting. And I think what we, what I, we heard tonight was a desire to maybe have a little bit more of a lead time on that. And so I don't know what other avenues there might be, or if staff can, at least for specifically, to help at least the folks who express interest tonight, if we can gather some addresses. I don't know what the solution is. E-subscribe is a good tool, but what I think we heard was more electronic availability sooner for different phases of the process. And the other one, again, typically we don't do the Q and A part, but, you know, I did hear the question about, you know, acquisition of materials, and I, and I can't speak for the school board, but I think if I was an applicant, I would not expend dollars on resources for a project that was not approved. And so I think that may be the, the perception of one pointing to the other is, we don't have any influence of that, but I would guess that an applicant would not want to expend resources without an approval. So again, I don't, I don't mean to be dismissive of anyone at the time during public hearing, but that's just the process that we have. Any other discussion, or I entertain a motion for continuance? Commissioner Goldson.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to indefinitely continue review of final site and building plans for stadium improvements at Jefferson High School.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to indefinitely continue the application at Jefferson High School. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The third item is a, sorry, it was a, is the same request for continuance for final site and building plans at Kennedy School, or Kennedy Stadium. Again, as with the first item, the public hearing was held open. So if there's anyone in the chambers who would like to provide testimony on the application at Kennedy, the public hearing is open. It's okay. You're certainly welcome to time to add more, otherwise.
I'm, I, I thought you had combined the two schools together for convenience.
Your testimony is still relevant.
Okay. Anyway, I will say that one of the former speakers brought up the idea of traffic safety. And that is still an issue because Old Chocopee is a four-lane highway merged with Ninety-Eighth Street at the point in front of Kennedy High. There is a daycare center on the northeast, north, yeah, the northeast corner of the school, which is, gets a lot of traffic. And then the new crosswalk, if they put it in at Stevens Avenue, will still see even more traffic, pedestrian traffic going down there. So there are safety issues that are involved in keeping everyone safe, not just the pedestrians and residents, but also the traffic as it's going by there. That's an ongoing issue with or without the high school there because of the traffic coming, cutting through that little zone between the two highways. That being said, when they do the noise study, what they're not doing is compounding the noise study. So they don't know that in addition to the band and the music from the band, the stadium noise, the speaker noise, all of that is also compounded with the traffic noise from Old Chocopee Road for residents. Now, because that's not produced by the school, that's not taken into consideration with the noise study. So the noise study only takes into account the amount of noise coming off of the football field minus whatever might reach my house, which is semi-tractor trailer trucks and cars going both directions. So in that residential neighborhood, there are, there's a lot of seniors and children along that intersection. And the noise isn't going to account for what it does to people living there beyond the scope of what the school is studying for this noise waiver, if they get it. That's something that you probably won't hear about unless you look specifically at the noise waiver. The, the safety issues for on-street parking from students crossing over Old Chocopee Road at night is a big issue, and I don't know how the traffic is going to be handled with that. Again, just to reiterate, there's some locations, if they don't choose to stay at Lincoln High, and I know that was an original proposal from the architect, was just using one stadium and making it really grand rather than two smaller stadiums. But there's also space in the South Loop, near the Mall of America, that has really big, open fields and potential that the city of Bloomington already owns and would be perfectly suited for night games and for renting it out beyond that to other players, people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to provide testimony on this item?
Hi again. Sorry, I hate public speaking, so this is really fun for me. But I wanted to say, in case it's noted separately between the two stadiums as we were speaking about them as if they were combined before, so I wanted it duly noted, I guess, one for each, that the stadium locations flank Nine Mile Creek. I just don't know if that's been clearly viewed. So when I spoke with the Environmental Quality Board about this, I asked about combined impact footprint, which is something, I guess, is a hot topic for them right now. So there's a lot of research and focus being paid to combined project imprints like that. So when you look at the potential for two games to be held on, say, a Friday night with both of them having four ninety-foot poles of lights and noise at the decibel of around one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty, which is what a cheering sports crowd is like. And if you think about the fact that eighty-five is considered damaging to hearing, then that's quite a lot further. It also only falls off at about, I think it's like six decibels every few feet. So that's potential to be well over sixty in my living room or other people's living rooms. And then for the birds and animals that are trying to pass through there, that is, in many studies, showing to be detrimental to them. There are some snow geese who, if they have a negative impact on their stopover grounds, which would be what would be considered on the flyway, an area where they stop to rest and feed. If a snow goose, in some cases, is disrupted during that stopover, they will not breed at all that season when they reach their final destination. So if you think about it from a combined impact standpoint, I have, just have so many concerns about that. So I would just love to see, again, and I know the applicant was online and is still online, just any way that we could work with the MPCA, the Environmental Quality Board, or should we need to get a petition to do so? Would be great to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Do we have anyone else online since we last checked?
Chair Roman, let me check in with Kenneth Ennis, see if there's anything he would like to add to this item. I will unmute you now.
Thank you. I have no further comment at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item?
Yeah, Doug Herzog, one last thing. This is recorded. I've reached out to my council member, Sean Nelson. I haven't heard anything via email or phone. So I don't know what we do about that. We just have some questions and not even responding back. So that's kind of that nobody's responding, everybody else is responsible thing I was talking about. So I just wanted to record what we've been trying to communicate with Sean. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, I guess we have.
I guess I just more have a question. What are the goals of what you're trying to accomplish by building either Lincoln, I'm sorry, either the Jefferson or the Kennedy High School? I haven't found anything in which the goals have been stated in a way to show the good of Bloomington. So are you, are you able to tell us that we, I mean, I'm guessing that most of the people that are here, we're all concerned about this issue? Can you explain to us why it's being done?
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. And again, on this one, we, there's a request for an indefinite continuance. I would, again, just offer information about the same feedback I gave to the applicant on the first one, it would apply to this. And, you know, what we heard in the, I did hear a question about goals, and that would be a question for the applicant. And then I will, again, for the benefit of the, those watching or in person, the planning commission has a fairly narrow role. When applications come to us, our job is to look and say, do they or do they yet not meet the requirements for that specific application, for that specific location? Our job is not to have an opinion on whether something is a good idea or a bad idea. Our job is to say it does or does not meet the test. Other bodies have a different degree of discretion, but the planning commission does not. So questions about the goals and the merits of the project, I would encourage folks to start with the school district. Because again, that's outside of the purview of this body. Yes, Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Chair. One thing that I do want to mention also is when this does come back before the planning commission, I just want to make that clear for folks who are here and listening now, is that, that entire application comes back before us, not just the noise study and the MPCA guidance. And so our role is to look at the entire application yet again. All parts of it, starting from the very beginning. So it's, I want to make that clear, that it's not just the noise study or the MPCA guidance coming back to the commission. It's the entire application that we will be looking at again. Thank you.
And the commission then makes a recommendation up or down to the plan, to the city council, who is the final decision-making authority on this issue. Again, just a little bit of a, sorry. The final decision was subject to appeal to the city council. Sorry, this is, usually I have my cheat sheet, but it's not on my cheat sheet because it's not a decision tonight. But there is, there are multiple steps available to the process. Thank you for the correction, Vice Chair. Any further discussion, or I'll entertain a motion? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Chair. I move to indefinitely continue review of final site and building plans for stadium improvements at Kennedy High School.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for indefinite continuance. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item, the continuance passes. And again, I want to thank people for their engagement and for their sharing with us. As we in this group say many times, there are big things that come before us, sometimes for decisions, sometimes for recommendation, and it's crickets. So I will take a room of people who are interested and engaged any night. Item number four is a study item. It is our preliminary discussion of the 2024 work plan. We can take a short pause if anyone would like to, to, you're welcome to stay for the riveting discussion of the work plan. But. This was a, this was something we talked about at a previous meeting during our, our policy and issues update, about how, at least in my time, we usually get a work plan in December for us to take action on. And after learning this last year during some of our board and commission work about how some of the other boards develop work plans, I think several of us asked if we could have a conversation with staff as they're developing it, so that when it comes later in December, it's not the first time we've seen it or we've had an opportunity to help shape it in some way. So with that, Senior Planner Johnson will walk us through what we should know before we have a dialogue.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Roman, and members of the planning commission. Good to see you this evening. You framed it up very well. You know, typically, our process has started a little bit later in the year, but I think it would be a process improvement to visit with you earlier on in order to gain your feedback and initial reaction to some of the projects that staff is working on and foresee being, coming before you to kind of focus our attention in 2024. So kind of framing this up, I will share a couple slides just to kind of provide background on this handout that we provided you in our packet. I will note that the, the handout before you this evening is, does reflect an updated version from the one that was in the original packet. So I would, we did rerun the packet, so the new version is in the current packet now. But for the purposes of this evening's discussion, I would focus on utilizing this handout. And we do have some versions of it over on the table, too, if anyone wants to follow along. In terms of how the planning commission work plan comes together, so just a point of process, and I know many of you are on the board for a few years now, certainly benefit our newest member. But in terms of how it comes together, so typically, as you noted, Chair Roman, you know, it'd come before the planning commission in December and city council and be adopted in January. But there is a, there is an internal process that occurs prior to that. So through, basically, May through October of the year preceding, the, the work plan year that we'll focus on, is, is kind of a wide-ranging time for staff from all different departments to provide feedback and ongoing brainstorming about projects that are upcoming. Some of those things are stimulated from external forces, like, you know, legal case law or other things happening and kind of real estate trends or, you know, other things that affect planning. Some of those things are generated from opportunities for collaboration amongst different departments within the city. So during that early part in the process, really, it just becomes kind of an open venue for staff to submit projects for us to brainstorm on. Once we have that list of projects, we start to do a prioritization process. And what, in order to inform how many projects we think can be added to the work plan, part of that, part of the process also involves evaluating all of the carryover projects we anticipate, things that we know are going to be required for the following year due to a variety of circumstances. And so that's, that's what kind of formulates this, Todd, this category on your list as the nondiscretionary items, or what we originally called the mandatory. But these are, these are projects that we, we feel, just as the nature of those projects, that they're going to have to go forward as part of the work plan. That leaves kind of a bucket of staff capacity, and we try and, we do our best. It's not a perfect science, but we do our best to try and determine how many hours of staff time it's going to take to deliver those projects. And what that gets us to is how much remaining staff capacity do we, do we have to add new, new work for the following year? And that gets us to the prioritization exercise. So this year in particular, we did, we, we adopted a new process where we had a facilitated session amongst planning staff of our brainstormed list, and we actually did a project impact scoring exercise amongst the planning staff. And so that was a new feature to this year's work plan. And on the, the handout before you, the projects that scored the highest for what we see as, you know, the members of the planning division, those were the, the brainstormed projects that we felt had the greatest impact and had the most urgency for current planning issues that kind of were facing. So just a point about that. Once we get at a list of recommended projects, and again, this is just, the recommendation is being put forth by the planning division, we circulate that draft amongst all the various departments in the city, including our sustainability staff, our equity staff, various leaders amongst other departments and divisions, but also heavy emphasis on community development leaders as well. And so they have an opportunity to provide comment as well. That gets us to where we are this evening, at the end of November here, trying to solicit your preliminary review of our list and provide feedback on the projects that you think are pressing and that the planning commission will want to see next year as we go through a process to present you a formal version of this for recommendation. We'll certainly take your input tonight, and the draft that goes forward will reflect that input. And then eventually, and this kind of gets to maybe, this is the point where I should have probably started, is that as the city's advisory board and land use and transportation matters, you're required to adopt a work plan on an annual basis. That's a requirement in the city code. And so the city council is the ultimate authority who adopts the planning commission's work plan. So typically, we would do that at the second or so meeting in January, depending on what's in their early agendas. So hopefully that provides a little bit of background on the process. So again, referencing this list I have before you. So we broke out these projects in two buckets. The first bucket that I'll just mention is the, the, the non, what we view as the nondiscretionary projects bucket. And the reason, and let me, just for a second, describe why we don't think, why we think it's not nondiscretionary. So what this list of projects include is carryover projects from the 2023 work plan that are all, for the most part, there has already been a significant amount of work completed on these projects, and they're in progress. There is a few other projects that were added to the planning division's responsibilities and scope of work for kind of outside reasons, for lack of a better term. Recreational cannabis is a good example of that. Native landscaping, you know, we also support the Sustainability Commission, some of the work they do, of course, the public work staff is their primary staff support. But we do plan on these collaborations throughout the year. So those are examples of projects that are currently in progress. And then we have the council-deferred projects. So two projects on this list, if you recall, were on your 2023 work plan. Ultimately, the city council decided to defer those projects to 2024, and that was the South Loop District Plan Update and the Pickup Window Drive-Thru Standards Project. And so that's the council-deferred category. And then in terms of the category of otherwise required, this gets to mostly projects that we perceive as urgent due to pending or recent legal matters. we perceive as urgent due to pending or recent legal matters. In this particular instance, the park dedication requirements, there's a pretty, there was a significant case in the state of Minnesota about this particular issue. So we all concur as staff that it's urgent and important that we review that for the city's park dedication requirements. So if, if it's okay, I know maybe I don't want to be too redundant, but I can just read off this list here quickly in terms of non-discretionary projects. So you have the Lyndale B4 rezonings, Part Two. This, of course, came out of the Lyndale retrofit process, the sign code update nearing completion. Maybe Glenn will have an update about that process at the, at the last item, agenda item. The Missing Middle Housing Study, the Environmental Standards Review, the RS1 zoning district study, the South Loop District Plan Update, the Toolkit for Aging Commercial Nodes, Short-Term Rental Regulations, SRO Standards Review, those are single-room occupancy, the park dedication requirements review, as I mentioned, native landscaping updates, recreational cannabis amendments, pickup window standards, the zoning code reorganization, the Annual Miscellaneous Issues Ordinance, the EV Infrastructure Plan, that's almost nearing completion as well, the American Boulevard Transitway Project, just general transportation support. And I should add, too, that there's another category of projects that are, support other departments on a typically annual basis, transportation studies being the most important of those, because they're typically led by our engineering and public work staff, but planning plays an important role in supporting that work. The Riverview Corridor Transitway Project, that continues on, and planning staff do support that as well at a staff level. And then various Port Authority initiatives. The Port Authority is doing a five-year strategic plan next year, and so we anticipate that there's going to be some recommendations for work and projects that come out of that, that planning staff will be involved in. Last thing I'll say about this list is that it's, we calculate, and I've whiffed on a few projects in the past in terms of how many hours they're going to take, so I'll, I'll own up to that, but it's an imperfect science, but we do our best to try and figure out how much these projects are going to take. And this, this hourly rate, it basically approximately reflects 75%-ish of the amount of long-range planning hours that we have in our bank of staff capacity. So moving on from that list, this gets us to more of the items that we feel are discretionary. And these are the projects that were submitted from a brainstorming standpoint and the ones that staff went through a scoring and facilitation exercise. So the ones that were, that scored the highest, and I know that we did not provide a detailed project description of these projects, so I'm happy to do that tonight. If anyone has any specific questions, just on the basis of these more general descriptions of what these projects are, I'm happy to do that. But the ones that scored the highest in this discretionary category, according to the staff impact scoring, was more admin streamlined approvals, review of multifamily residential standards, refined parking flexibility process in code, an office conversion study, an equity review of the zoning code, and a development application fee study. So these are the projects that staff, absent any other, absent feedback from other bodies and external parties, these are the ones that we would recommend bringing forward. Certainly can discuss that and go from there. The other projects that did not score as high through this process included an industrial use mix evaluation, and that was kind of stimulated for some discussion at the council level, code audit for technical language, temporary structure standards, and farm poultry and animal amendments for ducks. We've received some feedback that folks would like to expand opportunities for ducks in backyards in addition to chickens. So these are the projects that, according to our scoring, did not score as well, but we thought we would provide you those, the, the list of everything that was kind of up for consideration, if you will. So with that, and again, I can provide more, better explanation on some of the projects, or for that matter, some of the non-discretionary ones that you might be interested in, and Glenn and I and the rest of the staff certainly welcome your feedback on other projects to add as well that might be type, top, top of mind for you. So I've spoken enough, and this is, it's your work plan.
Sounds good. Thank you for all the work that's gone into that. It's helpful to understand some of the thinking. This is a study item, so it's, our job is to offer any feedback. Also, if there are things that we would like the staff to think about, how they might, yes, fit into this plan, if it might bump some discretionary things or whatever that may be. I'll start with Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Johnson, I just have a question related to the American Boulevard Transitway Study. I know that this creeped to the front or top of our list, given that the Met Council and Metro Transit were looking at elimination of routes and bus lines around American Boulevard. What is the status of that? And does that need to be pushed even forward, or are we kind of, are we working alongside what's the decisions that are being made over there?
All right. My thought on that was if Met Council has signaled that we're no longer their priority, is this still a priority?
Right.
Thank you, Chair Roman and Commissioner Albrecht. Yeah, so the status of the American Boulevard Transitway Study is that in the, the new regional transportation plan, they still have the American Boulevard listed in the specific category. It didn't fall out of the plan, but eventually, if the city, it was kept in the plan, basically contingent upon the city performing this study. So I don't think it's a matter that if it doesn't get completed by, say, June or September or January of '25, that the Met Council would take that action of removing it altogether as a potential Bus Rapid Transit facility. But it's something that the city does need to perform, and unfortunately, there was just not enough capacity on the engineering side of the organization to, to lead that effort this year. And so that's hence why it's carried over. But I don't perceive it as a threat currently to, to lose that status.
Commissioner Goldson.
Thank you, Chair. I think looking at just some of the discretionary projects and the impact of some of these items on us as a body, two really came up as my priorities. I would, I would love the, the equity review of zoning code. I think we've got a lot of opportunity as our population shifts to make sure that we are looking at it from an equitable perspective. The other piece that I really think, and this comes up on a lot of applications, is the refined parking flexibility process. I think that, I jokingly call us sometimes the Parking Commission because we're, we're talking about parking more than we are talking about the transformation of a space or a development. And so I love, I love the idea of let's, let's be more flexible, but put some guardrails up around that flexibility and what does good look like. I think that would have a lot of good impacts if we work on it now in the next, you know, three, six, nine years for, for future commissioners. I know I'm rolling off in June or July, I can't remember, but that one, I think, would have helped me in my five and a half years previously if it was in place.
Thank you for that comment.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, I know I wasn't supposed to look at it, but I do have a question about the list that was provided in our packet initially. And that was the Minnesota River Valley Connections, the Trail Connections. Can you speak more about that and why it dropped off the list?
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, thank you for asking that, because I'd love to talk about it, and I had the, fortunately I had the benefit to connect with Renee Clark and Parks and Rec prior to tonight, and so that was really helpful to better understand that. But there's a few things going on with the Minnesota River Valley Trail Connections component. One, that project was shifted in the CIP back a couple of years to 2027. So that's one component of it. Another component of it that's positive is that there is currently a trailhead project happening down at Lyndale next year. Julie Long is very knowledgeable about it. I think she might have been on the, the horn, so maybe if there's detailed questions about it, she can provide some information. But, and I believe another stretch of the Minnesota State Trail was also in the federal infrastructure bill, and so the construction of that will also go forward in the next couple of years. So they still have to secure permitting and, and those types of things. But in, in speaking with Renee Clark and Parks and Rec, I think this presents an opportunity for us to kind of pause on this work until we know the impact of everything that's going to be included. I should also add the Moyer Project that was part of the city's referendum that will ultimately connect into, I believe, into the state trail. And so these are more opportunities that have to be kind of considered thoughtfully. And in speaking with Renee, their staff over there thought that it would be best to delay that for a period of time until we know how all of these pieces of the puzzle fit together, if that makes sense.
It does. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chair, the reason I'm interested in this is, you know, we have been getting some development applications for what I'll just call medium-density residential, your, your five-story on, on podium projects, and we keep asking, why aren't we getting taller buildings in Bloomington when our neighbors in Edina and South Minneapolis are? And the answer I keep getting from the Port Authority and others is that we can't command the rent in Bloomington that our, our competing neighborhoods are getting. And I think one of, when I look at us compared to Edina, and I'll just take the South Loop for example, one area we can win is that we have beautiful natural areas in the South Loop District that Edina doesn't have. The hard thing is, is you can't get to them. I live in South Loop, and I have to walk a mile to get to the Minnesota River Valley, even though I live a block away. And so one of the ways I think, I'm not a developer, but one of the ways I think we can get higher rents, particularly in South Loop, is by making it easier to get to the Minnesota River Valley. And so I know I've seen in plans in our Park Master Plan, I think, and whatever, there's like five trailheads that are planned in the South Loop District to make it easy to get from South Loop down to the Minnesota River Valley. And I'm not too interested in us delaying that. I think that's a very quick way we can raise rents in a good way to get taller buildings and higher density development that we're looking for. And so when we're kind of putting our hands up saying, we just can't get the rents, well, these are the things I think we can do as a city to get higher rents, and I would ask that we, we can, we prioritize these trail connections.
Chair, Chair Roman, if I can add one thing to that, too, and I know, as I mentioned, and as you know, the South Loop District Plan Update is one of the components on the work plan as directed by council from last year. And I would state that the, the trail piece of it would be open for analysis and subsequent additions through that vehicle, if that makes sense. The trails will, are a component of the South Loop District Plan and would be evaluated and looked at as part of that process specifically in South Loop.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and this is why I keep harping on that more than anything, is that we need to update the South Loop District Plan. I think, in my opinion, the development we've been seeing in South Loop is, is frankly a bit disappointing. I think when you look at the South Loop District Plan as it stands today, that's 12 years old or whatever it is, what we've gotten does not look like what was envisioned in that neighborhood. We were expecting much higher density, other buildings that look like Health Partners and Reflections, and that's what we wanted to see there. And we've been getting a lot of five-story on podium wood buildings. And I think anything we can do, so getting these trail connections in place and, you know, updating the South Loop District Plan, maybe, maybe it's rezoning to higher, higher density minimums, et cetera, to get the type of development we thought we were going to get, maybe raising our standards a little bit, I think has a, a real impact.
That's good, I think, especially because it'll be after my time is done, but we will have some interim uses that are coming to a termination. And I think as the, anticipate the argument for why that should be permitted again will be exactly what you've talked about, is the numbers don't pencil out, and let's not give that, let's not give that argument air or room for air. The one thing that, you know, I know our friends from engineering are on with bated breath waiting to hear me bring it up, the one thing that's not on here is an update of our streets policies, which, if my memory serves, were adopted in 2002. So that means as of next year, we'll be 22 years old. And so I would encourage maybe some conversation with staff there about their capacity to take that project on. I know that, and again, everyone knows my thing is sidewalks, but, and I couldn't find the exact, it was in one of our supplemental pieces that we had in one of our conversations with our boards and commissions groups last year around this time when the city manager and the mayor were going through the new strategic plan. And I remember being super excited because one of the things in, in, in there talked about improving the sidewalk network and the walkability of our, of our neighborhoods. And what I've discovered in my five and a half years in this body is that will never happen until our streets policy changes to say that that is a priority and that that is our overriding decision when we rebuild streets. And so, given that it is a priority in the strategic plan, I would like to believe, and this came up when we had the conversation about speed limits and other traffic calming things, and, you know, a, a new streets policy that said our streets are going to look different, not tomorrow, but when we rebuild this street and this street and this street over the next, as I said before, every street we rebuild is a 50-year decision. And so, again, things will not change overnight, but they won't change at all if we don't update those. So I'd like to see that at least given serious consideration for addition. Again, I know it's beyond the, the planning division, but our body is tasked as the, the body tasked with transportation. Other thoughts? Did you get what you needed from us tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you for the feedback on the discretionary projects that we put forth. We think they are impactful, and we take your comments to heart in terms of what other areas to prioritize, and we'll have those conversations with staff in terms of what that could look like before we bring you back a more formal version for your formal recommendation.
Great. And that will be on our agenda on the 21st when we meet for, that'll be a short presentation and a conversation about, at that time it will come, the work plan will be before us for adoption. All right, thank you. Yes.
And Chair, I guess the one thing I would say is just on a process standpoint, if this is something, you know, we always like to try and keep the brainstorming window open as long as we can, because there's really good ideas that get stimulated throughout the year. But I think one of the lessons that Glenn and I discussed is just that I think it's a good practice to bring this to you sooner and have this discussion earlier on, so that's something certainly we're going to be striving to do.
Thank you for adding this in. I think, again, the, the whole part of, again, under the strategic plan, there's been the whole process about boards and commissions, how do we make them more welcoming and how connected? And the number of things I've learned about how, and each of our boards and commissions are unique, some of us are more, have, have a little bit more authority than others do. But everyone does things a little bit different, which is fine, but I've just learned a number of things, and it's been, it's been really helpful. And I think this kind of engagement is, again, because so much of our work is transactional, yes, no, does, doesn't, we don't always, we have, sometimes we get to have the fun stuff. And this is one of those times when we can maybe help shape some of the discretionary things or the fun stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item five is the Planning Commission Policy and Issue Update, and I will start with the planning manager.
Chair Roman, Commissioners, December 7th would be your next meeting. However, we have no items on that agenda, so that meeting will be canceled. So your actual next meeting will be December 21st. We do have three items on that agenda, variance application related to parcel frontage, and that's at 9946 Maple Avenue South. Secondly, we have a preliminary, preliminary and final development plan for a 201-unit apartment building with an 11,000 square foot detached daycare. That's at 6701 West 78th Street. And then finally, we have the review and approval of your 2024 Planning Commission work plan. Presently, we don't have any items for the January 4th meeting, but there could be continuances from December 21st or potentially some study items. So it's uncertain whether that meeting would be required. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else that anyone on the commission would like to raise? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say welcome to our newest commissioner. Excited to have you, and now we have seven, so that's great.
Thank you, Commissioner Albert.
Well, Albert.
Anything else for this policy and issue update? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned until December 21st.